I'd like to call the meeting order. Mrs. Burns, roll call please.
Mr. Sullivan?
Present.
Mr. Parentano?
Here.
Mr. Allen?
Present.
Mrs. Bowman is absent with prior notice. Ms. Boyle?
Here.
Mr. Feather?
Here.
Mrs. Hollenbeck?
Present.
Mr. Kovitz?
Here.
Mr. Marion?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The board met in executive session this evening prior to this meeting to discuss matters of employment, issues related to labor relations, and matters related to litigation. The district mission statement: The Nishamani community builds futures by empowering each child to become a productive citizen and a lifelong learner. Mrs. Burns, any announcements?
No announcements.
Thank you. Mr. Jones, superintendent's report?
Good evening, everyone. Just to, I want to make sure we make this announcement that our work session, our next scheduled public meeting for the full board, the date has been changed from Tuesday, October 8th to Monday, October 7th. So, the meeting that's scheduled for October, the two meetings in October, the first one, the public work session, has changed to Monday, October 7th. I want to point out that early in September, we celebrate here in Pennsylvania Constitution Day during the week of September 16th. A lot of activities happened across the district, a lot of our schools in celebration, recognition of Constitution Day. Good activities, fun activities. I saw, again, a Chris Stanley video of one of our middle schools, Pequeston, no, it was Sandberg, where, a big game show where students were competing against teachers. Here at Maple Point, no surprise that they seem to secure a lot of our local dignitaries, and they had, as part of their program, Police Chief Joe Bartarolo from Middletown Township, Middletown Township Supervisor Amy Strauss, Levittown News Now.com editor, Tom Sofield, U.S. Representative Brian Fitzpatrick, and PA Representative Frank Faure. Those are just some of the examples that happened across the district. Elementary schools as well are participating in that program, and our teachers are very cognizant to make sure we try to build around these special days that are part of our educational program here in the state of PA. This evening, we are competing with the college fair that's taking place at the Nishamani High School. It's good for you to know that our high school students do have opportunity right here locally as part of the high school program to participate in a college fair. It's sponsored by the National Honor Society, and it's taking place in Jim One from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. So, if we get done in time, some of us can get out there and see some of the college fair activity. I do want to point out, back in my superintendent's report is a reminder of that new alumni spotlight board that's in the high school to just spotlight Nishamani alumni who are doing good work. And one alumna who has done really well is the Nishamani High School Dana Martel for her nomination in the Primetime Emmy Awards for outstanding picture editing. And she actually references her time here at Nishamani and learning some software, editing software, here at high school that she continues to use today in her profession. So, that was kind of neat. And then finally, the other thing I'd like to point out is it happens to be here on the Maple Point property, but it could almost be anywhere because we do have good relationships with our townships and municipalities. But here, Middletown Township had secured a grant for a walking biking trail, and as part of that effort, they actually needed to come around our softball field that's in the corner of the Maple Point property and needed to move that field. So, we actually were the beneficiaries of a new softball field. In moving the field, we have a new infield, new backstop, new benches, and actually they've replaced the benches on the other field that's out there as well. So, softball's in good shape here at Maple Point, and we just need to get walking paths next to the other two middle schools so we can upgrade our fields there as well. But we thank Maple, or we thank Middletown Township for the effort to keep us in mind as they also helped improve the Middletown Township property here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. That brings us to the first public comment session. Mrs. Burns, do we have anyone?
Sean Feltcher?
Shayna.
Shayna. You can go over to the podium. Just Adam, help lower that down.
Okay. Hi, my name is Shayna. Last year, I head coached Anna as a coach for cheerleading at Pequesting. This is hard for me to do because of what I'm afraid she will do next year at the high s- wait. This is hard for me to do because of what I am afraid she will do to me next year at the high school. I think it is important because I don't want her to treat anyone else the way she treated me. Some things she did include making us stand outside for football during the cold weather in December and not allowing us to wear stockings, a sweater, or jacket. I was shaking from the cold and started crying from the pain because my legs turned blue. She made me wear a different uniform from everyone else. This made other kids question me and made me feel embarrassed and like an outcast. I did not know what to, I did not know what to say to the kids. In the middle, in the middle of the year, she had everyone try out again. New girls were added. The list that was posted only named the girls who did not make the team. Everyone on the team felt really bad for the girls who didn't make the team. After this, I was required to be at games but not allowed to practice. And when she did have us, and when she did have practices for the whole team, who, like the kids who didn't just make the competition team, when I went there, she had me, because I was the only kid who didn't make the team, sit out and just watch everyone else. I was looking to improve and was told I could get on the competition team with improvement. How could I do better if she would not allow me to practice with the team? Coach Anna put me as a front base, which meant I was catching someone who was bigger than me and also lifting them up. This was not safe for the flyer or me. If you dropped the flyer, the punishment was push-ups, and she had us do five push-ups. And every single time, I dropped the flyer because the flyer weighed more than me and was taller than me. So, I couldn't properly, like, hold where you're supposed to. She did other things that seemed inappropriate. She FaceTimed her boyfriend because the eighth grade girls wanted to talk to him and then gave them her phone, and they had, and they had a conversation with him. She did not allow us to participate in any other activities because we cannot miss practice. The school rules say you can do cheerleading, like, cheerleading or other activities. The school rules say that you can do cheerleading and other activities besides for that. She also allowed another girl to wear booty shorts and a sports bra during a Halloween party at the, at the school. This is against the dress code. And when the girl got a drink, when the girl was thirsty and she went to get a drink from the water fountain, and she saw the principal, she went running back into the cafeteria where we were having practice. I hope you will consider her actions as she is supposed to be a leader because I don't want her to do the stars.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Michael?
My name is Michael Felcher. Shayna is my daughter. My name is Mike Felcher. Shayna is my daughter, and she took tremendous courage to do this. There was multiple, what I've been told, there's been multiple complaints about, I think her name is Annalise. She is not a professor, she's not a teacher at the school. She's, whether she's a volunteer, or I don't know if she's a paid volunteer, but multiple things happened that are extremely inappropriate. Why this girl's, this, this girl's boyfriend was allowed to talk to any children is beyond my recognition. She's a college, college student, and she clearly, multiple things happened that would not have happened by a, by a normal teacher. I met her current teacher, I think, what's her, what's her teacher's name, Shayna?
Miss Carr.
Miss Carr during back-to-school night. And me and my wife both said, what a breath of fresh air this is to have an actual adult teaching young children. These are impressionable minds, as we all know. And what worries me is next year, Shayna's going to try out for cheer, and Coach Anna Leece has now been graduated to the high school, and she shouldn't even be involved at all. I don't know if it's been reported, or maybe there's a lack of communication that's going on, but this woman should not be at all teaching in this, should not be coaching kids. My daughter wanted to participate in other things. She wasn't able to because she was told not to. And, look, she's skinny, and being out in the cold, I mean, she honestly gets blue. While you let any young kid not in-
What, what school is this at?
Pequesting. She's no longer at Pequesting. Me and my wife both complained about it, but I don't want to bring up the past. What I'm worried about is the future, is next year. And also, we're taking the courage because if Coach Anna Leece is there next year, is Shayna not going to make the team because clearly this is public? And it's going to get back to her. But I'm worried that, because she shouldn't be there. And that's, that's basically all I have to say, but thank you for listening to my daughter.
Thank you. I'm not sure what her last name is. We'll find administration.
Okay. Okay, that brings us to Section Two, Routine Matters. I'd like to make a motion to approve Item 2.01, the minutes, 2.02, the treasurer's report, 2.03, check register and procurement card purchases, 2.04, bids, 2.05 investments, and 2.06 exoneration. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second, with Mr. Parentano. Comments, questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes eight to zero. That brings us to Section Three, Personnel Certificated. I'm going to pull 3.01, NFT Contract 2019-2024 out, and the other ones will be a master motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve Item 3.02, tenure awards, 3.03, leave of absence, 3.04, revised leave of absence, 3.05, return some leave, 3.06, appointments, 3.07, co-curricular resignations, 3.08, co-curricular appointments, and 3.09, ancillary appointments. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second, by Mrs. Hollenbeck. Comments or questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes eight, zero. 3.01, NFT Contract 2019-2024. Whereas the Nishamani School District and the Nishamani Federation of Teachers have a tentative agreement on a new five-year collective bargaining agreement covering the school years from July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2024. And whereas the agreement includes salary increases of 1%, 0.5%, 0.5%, 0.5%, and 1% for the five years of the agreement, and whereas the total salary increases are 3.1%, 2.4%, 2.1%, 2.0%, and 2.3% over the five years of the agreement, when salary step increases are included for an average salary increase of 2.4% per year, and whereas new language incorporated into the agreement will permit identified secondary teachers to teach up to six instructional classes a day, and for the district to have greater flexibility in the design of the academic schedule, and whereas language revisions were incorporated that address the management of the new teacher orientation program. Now therefore be it resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the attached collective bargaining agreement with the Nishamani Federation of Teachers covering July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2024, and authorizes the execution of said agreement by the appropriate board members, officers, and administration of the school district. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Feather. Comments or questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes eight to zero. Brings us to Section Four, Personnel Support. Mrs. Hollenbeck?
I'd like to make a motion to approve 4.01, Retirement Resignations End of Assignments, 4.02, Leave of Absence, 4.03, Revised Leave of Absence, 4.04, Appointments, 4.05, Co-Curricular Resignations, 4.06, Co-Curricular Appointments, 4.07, Ancillary Appointments, and 4.08, Classification of Instructional Assistance.
Can I get a second? Second by Mr. Kovitz. Comments or questions?
They have an eraser?
Yeah. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes eight to zero. Educational Development, Mrs. Boyle?
I'd like to make a motion to approve 5.01, Contracted Services, 5.02, Settlement Agreement, 5.03, Out of District Placement, and 5.04, Overnight Trips.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kovitz. Comments or questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes eight to zero. Business Operations, Mrs. Hollenbeck?
I'll be pulling out 6.03 to read that separately. I would like to make a motion to appro, to make a motion for 6.01, PSBA Elections, 6.02, Lower Southampton BCIU Third Lease Addendum, and 6.04, Professional Design Service Contract.
Can I get a second? Second by Mrs. Boyle? Any comments or questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes eight, zero.
6.03, The Giza Phase Four, Lower Southampton Elementary School. Whereas the Nishamani Board of School Directors desires to move forward with additional scope items of the Guaranteed Energy Savings Project as it relates to Lower Southampton Elementary School Phase Four. And whereas the Nishamani Board of School Directors approved the appointment of Reynolds Energy Services, Inc., to provide all the necessary services, including construction upgrades related to energy-efficient measures at Carl Sandberg Middle School, Albert Schweitzer Elementary School, and Herbert Hoover Elementary School, Joseph Ferterbar Elementary School, Pequesting Middle School, Walter Miller School, and Pearl S. Buck Elementary School collectively Phases One, Two, and Three. And whereas the Nishamani Board of School Directors approves Reynolds Services, Inc., to provide all necessary services, including construction upgrades related to energy-efficient measures at Lower Southampton Elementary School, which consists of replacement of corridor ceiling and lighting, replacement of HVAC equipment to provide cooling with select replacement of other HVAC equipment, and improvements to the electrical system to provide cooling, provision of select architectural security upgrades, provision of select plumbing upgrades, provision of select architectural upgrades for accessibility, lighting upgrades, provision of select low-voltage system upgrades, and other minor improvements. And whereas the Phase Four scope additional to the overall Giza work, Phases One, Two, and Three, will be provided as recommended in the presentation to the Facilities and Planning Committee of the Board held on May 16, 2019, a presentation to the full board on June 4, 2019, and a review at the Facilities and Planning Committee meeting on September 18, 2019. Now therefore be it resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors accepts the amended proposal from Reynolds Energy Services, Inc., for Phase Four for additional scope items to the overall Giza project in the not-to-exceed amount of $5,997,603, and the revised contract sum shall be $41,001,723, with additional scope items for Phase Four relative to Lower Southampton Township Elementary School Energy Savings Guarantee under PA Act 3957 and 77 Guidelines. Be it further resolved that the President, Vice President, Secretary, Treasurer, Solicitor, and Administration of the school district are hereby authorized and directed on behalf of the school district and under its corporate seal to execute the contract as approved by the Solicitor and Administration and such other documents and affidavits, and to take such further actions as may be required by law and necessary or desirable to effectuate the aforesaid Giza Amendment Four for the Lower Southampton Elementary School.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Allen. Comments or questions?
At this time, Mr. Sullivan, I'd like to ask Mr. Damian Spar from Reynolds Construction to take the podium, explain the project.
And may I just expand on that just a little bit? Please explain what the impact is, not just for the district, but also for the community as a whole.
I don't know if that's a scope.
And not just financially.
Because it really does have an impact.
Would you, would the board like me to explain that, or would board members like to have that as a discussion?
People in the technical issue. We'll expand.
Will do. Good evening. My name is Damian Spar. I'm Executive Vice President at Reynolds. And the scope of the work at the Lower Southampton Elementary School is effectively a scope of work to provide cooling in the classrooms of that building, which is an upgrade to the HVAC systems. It is the electrical work that is required to do that. There will be a new secure vestibule installed. We will have automatic temperature controls installed. There will be a whole lot of, there's a significant amount of new electrical equipment being installed that's required in a lot of, not every, but much of the existing panel boards that are very old, difficult to service, get replaced. So, there's a significant increase in, in safety there. The corridor ceilings get removed, and they get abated and replaced. Lighting gets put in there as well. There's a new ADA accessible toilet room that gets installed. There's cooling to the multipurpose room, and there's some other additional HVAC replacement that's outside of the classrooms that occurs through this project. What we are doing with the IU as the end user, and the IU, Bucks County IU, as the funding agent for this, is we are working with them because we're going to be doing this work while the building is being used, which is different than what we've been doing throughout in Nishamani in the past. We've tried to do the bulk of our work over summers. This building is used year-round. So, we're doing a phased approach through that. What we'd like to do is try and finish the work by May 30th. If it goes a little bit past that to the, to the end of June, we'll, we'll deal that. But we're, we're working really hard to make sure that we can do it as quickly as possible so that we, we can provide comfort to everybody before the summer comes. And I think most of that will be attained right now. And the backside of that phasing is a lot of the work that's related to the secure vestibule and things like that. So, we just have to work with the IU so that we're not hindering their operations, and we're having the smallest impact on those children there as we work through the building. And that's effectively what the project is. Because we're adding air conditioning to the building, so we're, we're doing some positive things with better equipment and better lighting, but we're adding air conditioning, and so there's some energy savings, but it's not monumental because we're adding air conditioning to a building that's going to be running all year-round.
One question. The cost to the district for this is how much?
My understanding is that the district is being fully funded by the Bucks County IU through the lease agreement that I believe was passed earlier this evening, and that this is, there is really no net cost to the district for this.
Thank you.
So, the air conditioning system that's being installed is what type of system? Is it integrated into an existing system, or is it new?
It's new. We'll have new chiller, we'll have new chilled water piping, and we will have vertical units in the classrooms that, that are relatively quiet, and they disperse air high up in the room so you don't have the effect of cool air blowing on children. At the top, and in some other places in the Nishamani, at the top of those vertical units, which are favored by your, your maintenance folks, at the top of those vertical units, we have ductwork that comes out in one direction or both directions, and then it's, it's spread out into the room. On the top of these units, instead of using ductwork, we were able to fashion a louver at the top of that that's going to disperse the air out across the top of the room without having the additional expense of the ductwork.
So, this is all, these are all new systems?
Yes.
Newer systems?
For air conditioning, it is, yes.
We're not taking antiquated systems, and we're not trying to retrofit them in to just fit with what it is that we already have and make it work?
That's correct. We are keeping the boilers because they are functional, and they're being changed away from steam to hot water.
Okay, so, we're going from a steam to a hydronic system, which is-
Equipment that is in good shape gets kept, and for the, for the vast majority of it, unless it was something that we worked together that we decided that we didn't need to replace, if it, if it was serviceable for a long time, we kept it. So, we're, this is not a complete replacement, but it's a smart replacement, and upgrades are the things that really need to be taken care of, not only for those units that are in the classrooms that get completely redone, but for those electrical panels, which I mentioned, which are very important for the district to have in place, yeah.
And Mr. Jones, could you speak to Mr. Feather's other question about the community impact of having the IU in Lower South?
There's two positive impacts. I'm not quite sure what Mr. Feather's thinking about, but I'm going to give you my two positives, which is, one is the revenue generation that is accomplished by having them as a tenant. So, it's no small amount of money over the course of every four years that they're in that building. It's over a million dollars of revenue coming into the district. So, that's a, that's a real positive for the community to help support our overall system, our schooling system here. The other thing is that the IU does provide out of Lower South educational programming for students, not just from our area, but across the, the lower part of Bucks County, but many of the students that are there are our students because we run a good portion of our pre-K counts program. The Nishamani pre-K counts program has five classrooms there, seven, four classrooms. So, in the area, 70 students, probably just with pre-K, and then we have other Nishamani students who are there for early intervention services, special needs students who are receiving what would be services provided in other locations if it weren't for Lower South. So, it's good for Nishamani families to have that building up, operating, and providing those types of services. Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Yeah, I just want to emphasize again the, the idea that we, the district still owns the building. It's occupied, and the tenant's agreement that we work them to come to is to look after the building and upgrade it for us. Now, their costs became problematic, which is where they came back to us to see if they could come under our Giza project, which we used successfully on our other buildings. That's where you see that coming in here. And in return for that, we, they've asked to extend the lease. They're investing in the property. They'd like to stay there longer. All positives for the district. Thank you.
Well, one last comment I want to add to Mr. Spar and Reynolds. The, recently, I believe, we had an update on our Giza projects and their efficiency use, and the efficiency use is either met or exceeded the benchmarks put forth in the Giza One, Giza Two, and Giza Three projects. They have been profitable for the district, as well as improving the buildings. So, it has proven, you know, so far, to be a very good endeavor for us. But everybody just needs to remember that these Giza projects we're doing are not renovations. Okay, we are extending the life of the buildings, we're increasing their efficiency, we're making them more affordable, but they are not renovations. And, you know, there will be a point in the future, you know, where those same buildings may need to be looked at again. But overall, the, the project has, has been everything that you guys told us it would be, and we hope for the continued success and as we move forward. So, thank you.
Agreed that they're not complete renovations, but they are improvements to our building. So, they are, to some extent, renovations.
I characterize them as major, as a group of major maintenance projects. Yeah. Especially when we're not moving around walls and things like that, but, yeah, we're all saying the same thing.
Right. So, while, while I'm on that, I just, we have a rent, revenue income as a result of this lease agreement. We still have expenses because it is still our property, it's still our building. So, what's the percentage that we're operating on at this point, moving forward, percentage-wise, with regard to our building and our facility that we're maintaining versus what we're getting from the IU? And then-
That's a question for Mr. Irwin, too. Probably, he has to develop that, I would think.
Okay. Just a question I think we do need to consider. Not that it's, look, I'm, I'm in agreement with what we're doing with this, moving forward. I just want to make sure that we're crystal clear on where we are. I just want to make sure that we're crystal clear on where we are and where we're going.
Thank you, Damian. All right. In case anyone forgot, there is a motion on the floor, which then was seconded, so I don't think we need any more comments or questions. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight to zero. Any other board business before I go to second public comment?
Should I just briefly talk about Tewaunaw?
Yeah, you can do that.
I just want to bring some additional information to the public. This really doesn't affect other parts of the district, but it affects the operation of Tewaunaw Elementary School located on Brownsville Road. Currently, there's a development project in that area that is supposed to install a Super Wawa at the intersection of Bustleton and Bristol Roads. The, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Bristol and Brownsville Roads. And it is something that the school district is extremely concerned about. We know that is a very high-stress intersection to begin with. The safety and security of our students and staff at the school facility is paramount. So the district has asked the Lower Southampton Zoning Board to be a joined party in that proceeding. And we will be developing, through our solicitors, a rebuttal to the proposed project. And that shall be taking place, I believe now is it October 8th? October 8, 2018, at the Lower Southampton zoning hearing. Other than that, I don't think there's anything else to add at this time.
Would you agree, John, there's nothing else to add at this time?
Nothing.
Okay, that brings us to the second public comment period. Anyone wishing to approach the podium? Your name, where you live, your occupation?
Andy Warren, Shady Brook Drive, Borough Manager, Tullytown. Sometime, though, I got to figure out how to get to the first level of public comment.
Sign up.
I can't...
It's up on the corner.
Okay, I picked, I got it. All right. Beyond that, just a couple quick comments, observations, and perhaps clarification. First of all, I want to seriously commend the board and the union members for getting to the process here tonight. It was a heck of a lot better for the Nishamani community than the way the process worked the last time. So congratulations sincerely to both of you for that. I'm also disappointed, as I look around, I think there's 42 people here tonight. So, like, the people who show up to church on Easter, congratulations to us, but you all just spent more money than any other government body, short of the federal government, will spend in this community, and 42 people show up. That personally is disappointing. The question that I had, just so I understand this, is, I understand the percentage increases 3.1, 2.4, 2.1, 2.1, and 2.3. Sounds very good. Just to put that in maybe another perspective, if an individual were hired on the first day of the new contract, what would be the percentage increase for that individual by the end of the contract, assuming he or she stayed in his or her respective, yeah? I'm looking at Appendix A on page 35, and if I'm reading it right, they're hired at $45,000, and by five years, they'd be $55,000. Is that correct?
That's what the wage scale says.
Is that, and percentage-wise, that's what? I don't, 19? From 45 to 55 is what percentage?
Not moving 45 to 55 in that same scale.
No, no, from the beginning to the end, for the length of the contract.
We'll address it in board comments. We'll bring it up in board comments.
We normally don't do. It's not back and forth. My point was that it's just, and had that individual taken one course a year, he or she, by the end of it, would be $60,000, and that's fine. I mean, that's what is agreed to, that's all, which is about a 26% increase. And that's, I think that's what it is. I mean, there's no, you don't need to answer. I just think, I can check my math.
It's fine.
There's nothing wrong with your math.
Okay, thank you.
I'm an instructional assistant at Albert Zweitzer Elementary School. I live in Twin Oaks. I've lived there for 34 years. I am very thankful that we have, our teachers have a contract. Thank you very much. I'm very thankful that you settled the contract with the support staff for the administration in June. I just ask that you please settle our contract also. We have worked for a whole year without a contract, and it is extremely uncomfortable. I had to leave work today, very uncomfortable, because I don't have a contract. And I want you to understand that most of us, I did a little, just in my building, knowing where everybody lives, 89% of us that work during the day live in Nishamani School District, own homes in Nishamani School District. It's not the same for the teachers, it's not the same for administration, but that's fine, everybody should live where they want. But we live here, and we support here. And I know one of your complaints is that there's too many of us at the bargaining table, and I'm really sorry about that. But there are so many different types of people that work in the support staff. You can't, somebody who is a custodian can't explain what an instructional assistant does. We need to have people in each of our classifications to be able to explain to you exactly what we do. And hopefully, we'll reach a contract soon. But I have attended the meetings faithfully for the last year, and I intend to continue to come to them. And I hope to tell you what each of us does, so that you'll really understand it, so that the next time we have a contract, you'll totally understand what all of us do, and so you won't need to have so many at the bargaining table. Thank you for accepting the contract for the teachers. And I just have one question. I don't know if you can answer it tonight, but there was a classification of instructional assistants, and I'm not aware of what the change was, so if that could be explained. Thank you.
Hello. The classification was really just simply identifying people in their current positions. When they were hired, they were hired as instructional assistants, all of them, yourself included, I suspect on that list. And there are actually two categories. Some are instructional assistants/special ed, and some are instructional assistants/federal program. They're working with our Title I students. Those are the way they are classified in our agreement. And when hired, oftentimes, it was just listed simply as instructional assistant. We were just doing that as a clarification, okay?
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to board comment. I'm going to change the order a little bit. I'm going to do the first comment tonight. Guess what I wanted to say was, I want to say thank you to the NFT officers, members, my fellow board members, and the administration, because I think we all worked hard to get to this contract, a five-year contract. We, as Mr. Warren said, we've seen what happens in the past when labor unrest occurs, and it's not good. And I think in our case, and it was mentioned before, we did keep it to a very small group. Sometimes it was two of us, at the most, it was six of us total. And it worked. And it worked because we came to the table with ideas, and negotiation is people coming with ideas and going back and forth, and that's what we did. And there were some times where we broke off, and we weren't happy with each other. But we came back, and we did what we had to do to get to this point and ratify this contract tonight. And, you know, there were things that were changed, and, you know, we changed the, some of the teaching model by adding a six period. And, you know, the teachers are commended, and possibility of going to a block, and the teachers are commended for that, because they agree to that. And it was give and take. We gave, they gave. And that's kind of the way negotiations work. And it was an interesting process, but we got to where we needed to be. And I'll open it up, the other board comment.
I would just like to take the opportunity, Mr. Sullivan, to continue with your remarks and thank the group from the NFT and all our teachers that on a daily basis, you know, do their job and do it well. We had a total of two formal negotiation sessions during this process. There were significant concessions that were sought by the district in order to help us control payroll going forward, and to make it a better situation for all our residents to afford, and the district to continue to expand our educational model. You can't do that on your own, of course, you need the partners to do it with you. The leadership, especially President Hubert, you know, realized in the very beginning that if we could get some things out of the way by talking one-on-one, we could make some significant progress on those concessions that were sought, so they would have a better understanding, and they'd be able to bring those issues to their membership, to explain why the district needs these, and why they feel that we should do that. Significantly afterwards, Mr. Sullivan spent a lot of his own personal time attending these meetings, and later on, other NFT leadership members met with you, and it proved to be very fruitful. And, you know, what we couldn't achieve three years ago in more formal settings, we were able to achieve this time. Education's changing, and in order to be able to keep providing the type of education we want to provide here in Nishamani, payroll's our number-one concern, and we have to be conscious of that payroll and how we can handle it. The agreement to go to a six period gives us a lot of flexibility. I want to commend also Mr. Jones and his team, especially Mr. Millian, who worked side-by-side with Mr. Sullivan. I don't want to leave out our two new members, Ms. Kozak and Mr. Irwin. I'm still having to remember who you are. We'll get there. Who came in late and had to get up to speed very quickly to give us the support, and of course, the rest of the administrative staff that, you know, helped put together some of the models that, you know, we want to try to implement going forward. So I just want to correct one comment that Mr. Warren made. It was two contracts ago that it was a long impasse. It was the, it was the '08 to '13, three contracts. Oh, we had the one year with the three year. So that was the '08 to '13, and then there was a one year, and then there was a three year that was in between there. So I want to say thank you again to everyone that participated and realized what needed to be achieved, and we're willing to work hard to get there. So thank you very much, and I don't know if this would, just...
Two formal sessions.
Two formal sessions. Formal sessions.
Only doing the informal.
Right. The majority, 95% of what was achieved was done in an informal setting. And that's a legal negotiation thing, that, you know, you have formal, on-the-record negotiations, and then you can have off-the-record negotiations. 95% of what we achieved was in the off-the-record negotiations. Yes, thank you. Couple months, six months?
A little over six.
A little over six months. So, thank you. I don't know if this is a good segue. Could you address Mr. Warren's question about the scale?
Mr. Warren, you had a combination of things, not just moving down, but also across, if you take education coursework. But I think the balance for us is the fact that those percentages, those ultimate percentages really are the result of the fact that the large majority of our force, our workforce, teaching workforce, 50% of our teachers are in the bottom right-hand corner of our guide. So their percentages would be those first percentage numbers, the 1%, .5, .5, .5, and 1% for over 50% of our staff. So that's the balance off. We start a bachelor's degree candidate coming out of college, I don't have that number in front of me, you're looking at it, like 40, 45,000, right? So, yeah. I've got, I've got four boys, one of my guys started at Johnson &amp; Johnson coming out of college. He didn't start at 45, and they moved him along really fast already, he's only been there a few years. So, you know, that progression that you're talking about, we're competing with college graduates who have options today in today's workforce. And so, yes, you're probably right with your math, but the large majority of our teaching workforce is at the other end of that spectrum.
So it winds up being the blended average?
Yeah.
Board comment?
Does that mean he's done now? Never. Him and Feather put a, you know. First, I'd like to commend, forgive me if I'm pronouncing your name wrong, Shawna?
Shayna.
Shayna, for coming out and speaking. Very brave of you. We will see what the situation is with that, but thank you for coming out and speaking. I, too, am glad that the contract is settled with the teachers, and I want to settle the NESA contract as quickly as possible as well. We've been negotiating for a long time. We have given the, what's the word I'm looking for? Support staff several dates in October that we were looking for, and none of them have worked, so now we're into November before we can sit back down and negotiate. I cannot wait to get back to the table so that we can resolve the remaining issues that we have and get it settled. We're waiting on a confirmation of some, of some new dates. We've been back and forth for, since the Fact Finder report came back with dates, and we can't agree on any. Or I shouldn't, like, none of them work for what we've asked for. So we're, we're just waiting on confirmation, and hopefully, we can get back to the table soon and get this to bed, because I'm sure everybody would like a contract as well. Thank you.
So Shayna, again, to mirror Ms. Hollenbeck's comments, I appreciate you coming and bringing this to light. Our athletic programs, we have really great athletic programs, and we have really great athletic staff, you know, and athletics is a lot of things to a lot of people. It can be very cruel at times in the sense that it's very competitive, and, you know, unfortunately, they have to lose to be winners. That has nothing to do with what you're coming to us about, all right? The one thing that doesn't have any place in athletics is shaming. It doesn't belong anywhere in our schools to begin with. I'm a school teacher, okay? We don't bring that into our classroom. It shouldn't be left out on the fields either. So I, again, thank you for coming out, bringing it to light, and I think, I think most of the board can agree that this needs some looking into, and we will do that, all right? Secondly, again, it's a wonderful thing, we have a contract with the teachers. It breaks my heart, we still don't have a contract with NESA. Again, here's to November, let's get it done. Ms. Pulak, thank you for coming out and speaking. I appreciate the graciousness that you, that you show, and the hopefulness that you bring that something can be done, and your willingness to come out here and educate us on a regular basis. I'm a lifelong learner, and I certainly appreciate that, and the more information I can get, always the better. that. Um, and the more information I can get, uh, always the better. Uh, it just gives us more perspective, um, especially when th- this is something that i- is sort of outside the actual negotiating table. You're doing your part, and, and that, that means a lot. So thank you for that. Uh, and then lastly, in regards to, uh, Ms. Martell and, and the, the Emmy Award, I think, uh, just to end on a positive note, uh, I think it's, it's really awesome that as a district, we can turn out talent. Uh, and, uh, you know, we, we have a thing for athletics, but we, we really have a, some interest, we've made some interesting, uh, uh, headway in the, uh, the, the world of, of arts and entertainment. And I think, uh, I think that's really something special. And, uh, it's one of the things that, uh, makes me feel proud to keep coming back here, uh, every, every time. So, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Um, a couple things I'd like to address. Um, first, Shayna, your father, thank you very much for coming out, bringing this to our attention. Um, board cannot generally comment on what appears to be a personnel item, but I want you to know that it will be investigated. And very brave of you, young lady. Thank you. On another note, um, I'd like to thank the negotiating teams from the district side and National Federation of Teachers. History has not been kind in Nishamani in labor disputes. Um, going back to when I was in high school, in, uh, I was in Bishop Egan. My friends were here at the high school. And, uh, many of us remember, we were out for weeks to the point where my friends were practicing track with my coach, because we had, they had championships to win. We didn't. They did, but we, they needed our coach. And, uh, I remember those days, and they were not, not pretty. Um, when these contracts come up, we all kind of have a bit of a trepidation about it, because you just don't know how it's going to go. But I, I just want to thank everyone, because, uh, with fits and starts, as, as these things naturally go, you're somewhat adversarial to begin with. But everyone came to the table, willing to put the work in, and I thank you all for that. Um, brighter notes, Constitution Week. I was loving all those videos. Um, I am a, I'm a, I won't say a student, but I'm quite proud of the fact that, that the United States Constitution is such a wonderful document, first of its kind ever. And the fact that our students are taking the time with their teachers in, in the school to, uh, to learn about it and to, and to really absorb what a great document it truly is. It's a remarkable document. And, uh, I, I want to thank Chris Stanley yet again for keeping it in the forefront in our social media, so that everyone in the community is aware of good work going on in the school. And lastly, I want to, uh, don't normally mention we, we approve these appointments, but I do want to welcome our, our new chief of security, Kevin Burns. That's a important job. He's taking over from Cliff, who retired over the summer. Um, and again, I just want to extend a Nishamani welcome to him. And, uh, I believe I covered all my notes. Thank you.
I just wanted to thank Mr. Spar for, for coming and, you know, letting us know what, what is, what is going on. And, um, uh, you know, he's always been a, a good friend of the district. So I want to, I want to, I want to thank you for coming. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just wanted to, um, say one thing. I think Ms. Pulak had said about the, uh, the size of the negotiating team. Um, not sure if I agree. I think the smaller group does work well. If you have your elected officers, they're there to represent you. And I think, uh, one of the reasons the, the teachers' contract negotiations or the move along was that we had a smaller group. We were focused and we knew, we, we had a goal in mind. So, um, 20 people in the room does seem to me to be like a lot. Uh, and I know there may be different disciplines or different, or areas, but I still think it could be done with a smaller group. It's just my opinion and just having lived it for the last six to seven months. Uh, that's what, what I think. And I think I'm looking forward to starting the next negotiation session. So I'll talk to Ms. Huber. Maybe we'll start next week. So, uh, with that being said, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting's adjourned.